Good morning. It's 9:00 AM, September 3rd. I will call the order of the Saline County Board of Commissioners. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Shadwick.
Here.
Commissioner Vedrickson.
Here.
Commissioner Sparks.
Here.
Commissioner Weath.
Here.
Commissioner Hay.
Here. Please, if you're able to stand, join me in a flag salute followed by a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, we'll move into our citizens' input portion of the meeting where citizens may speak on county government, usually limited to three minutes, and pertaining to items that will not be discussed on today's agenda. Are there any... Okay, Norm?
Thank you. Norm, Alstline, Kansas. This is taken from ZipRecruiter.com. The 11 deadliest jobs in America. You need to look at it. What we think is dangerous is not dangerous.
Thank you, Norm. Anybody else wish to speak? Okay, at this time, we'll move into the consent agenda. The consent agenda is comprised of the approval of tax rule adjustments, approval of accounts payable, approval of public forum agenda, concurrence with the Salina's urban area boundary. Every 10 years, KDOT requests the city government to update their urban area boundary for planning purposes. This boundary is defined by the areas of the county that may take on an urban character within the next five to 10 years. The city of Salina is modifying their UAB. Justin Mater met with the city staff to review the changes to their existing UAB and find no issues. Changes to the USB does not affect Saline County in any way. The resolution form provided by KDOT requires a county concurrence signature requested to concur with the new UAB limits and sign the attached resolution. The City of Salina Commission will be presented with this resolution by the end of September. And then number five, approve the county commission minutes of August 27, 2024. Is there anything that any commissioner would like to remove?
Well, I would like to discuss just a hair further of that number four with the concurrence of the Salina urban. You've kind of described it there for me, but with the map that I've got, it's got lines drawn and then lines through the proposed and the change. What does all that mean? Can somebody tell me that?
County Administrator Philip Smith Haynes. So my understanding is that they are expanding their urban area boundary in two areas, basically to the southwest and to the southeast, a little bit beyond what they had 10 years ago. It really reflects kind of where development is moving, but it doesn't, you know, as stated, it doesn't really affect the county. We continue to retain jurisdiction until they decide to annex at some point in the future.
Well, the blue lines that are on here, I assume that that's where they're wanting to go now, on the map that's been provided to us?
Yes.
These blue lines, is that... And that obviously the southwest is where the new airport authority is growing, and the east takes in about a, looks like five miles from Iron Street down to, the map doesn't say what road that is, but... Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I move we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second to motion.
Got a motion as second to approve the consent agenda. All in favor says aye.
Aye.
Aye. That passes 5-0. Okay, that moves us on to the next.
Replacement SUV with Captain Jim Hughes from the sheriff's office.
Good morning, gentlemen.
Good morning.
I'm here this morning to request for action on the replacement SUV for the sheriff's office. Spring this year, one of our unmarked 2019 Dodge Durango's at the Investigations Bureau traditionally drives was involved in a two-vehicle crash, unmarked intersection in Salina. Nobody was hurt seriously, and it was a vehicle not being used in emergency capacity. It was the unmarked intersection where two vehicles collided. The Durango was totaled by the county insurance carrier at the time, and the insurance company did pay us $21,484 in exchange for the vehicle. Sheriff's Office did put out bids, and we've received one, and its RFA is requesting to purchase the vehicle per the bid. The bids were designed to encourage competitive bidding for multiple vehicle manufacturers. County staff distributed them locally and regionally to multiple dealerships. Unfortunately, we only received one bid, and that was the amount for $57,500. As for a 2004 Chevy four-wheel-drive police package Tahoe from Cable Dahmer out of Topeka, the bid did meet specifications. So Sheriff's Office is recommending that we purchase the 2024 Tahoe per the bid price at $57,500, and then apply the $21,484 that county staff has in a fund from the erected vehicle. That would bring the balance to $36,016. Sheriff Selden does have those funds available in his vehicle identification fund, and he'd be using that money to pay the difference between the bid amount and what the insurance has, and it would not give us an impact on any county budget.
One question, Captain Hughes. Is that a turnkey on that car, or will there be... When you take delivery of it, it's ready to put into service?
We will have to take it probably to KCOM here in town, get a couple radios installed, some visor lights, but it's not going to be a complicated install with a huge police package light bars and things like that, and we do have the funding for that as well.
Will this be an unmarked vehicle again?
Yes. Yes, sir.
And if it is an unmarked vehicle, obviously it's not a patrol vehicle. What's the purpose of it?
Our Investigations Division uses it, so a lot of times they can kind of use it as a part-time admin car for training and things of that sort. Also, if they are doing some operations that they don't want to have a light bar on top of the car, it's very handy for that to blend in a little better than a car that says sheriff on the side of it.
Any other questions? Any comment from the public? Okay, we'll bring it back to the commission for action, please.
Mr. Chair, when I move we approve RFA 2024-129 as presented.
Second to motion.
Got a recommendation to approve RFA 2024-129 as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. That passes 5-0. Thank you.
Home Health Recruiting Bonus Follow-Up with Jason Tiller, Health Department Director.
Good morning, gentlemen.
Mr. Chair.
I think we need to take it off the...
Okay.
So, Mr. Chairman, I move we untable RFA 2024-127 for discussion and possible action.
Second to motion.
Okay, we got a motion as second to untable RFA 2024-127 for discussion and possible action. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. That passes 5-0. Now we'll move on.
All right, good morning. So as we discussed last week regarding the reasons that we were brought to discussion about recruiting incentives, we were asked to follow up on whether it was possible with the recruiting incentives to be able to roll those funds over. Philip Smith Haynes reached out to the auditor, and the auditor has stated that even with the end of the year coming up, if we have a written agreement with the employee specifying what the terms of the payment are, then the auditor will consider that an encumbrance and let us roll those funds over. So that means that we would basically earmark those costs with the still saved salary dollars from this year and then be able to finish paying that out. So that means now we can do a split dispersment of those funds. Now, in considering that split dispersment, one of the things that we had talked about internally prior to bringing this last week was doing this split dispersment initially with half at two months and the other half at six months, and then still looking at some sort of program or, you know, time, service time that they have, whether it be a year or two years, which we can kind of further discuss and finalize this morning for that recruiting bonus. So with that said, still recommending that we increase the recruitment incentives as described, and it would still come out of the same budget line for unused salary, so it doesn't present any other additional impact to our overall budget.
Okay, any questions for Jason?
I just want to make one comment that in the future, I mean, I just think our salary system needs to be adjusted, looked at, whatever, and for us to continue to offer bonus recruitment bonuses is not a good option, I don't think, and I think it behooves us as a commission to look at that salary schedule down the road.
Agreed.
Other questions? Any comment from the public? Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, Jim.
One question. Do you have to... You have it where you say two months will be one split and the other half at six months, so it's a 50-50 on that $10,000, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that I, whether approved or disapproved, I knew what I was approving.
Okay, if there's no public comment, I'll bring it back to the commission for action.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve RFA 2024-127 as presented.
Second to motion.
Have a motion as second to approve RFA 2024-127 as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. That passes 5-0. Thank you, Jason.
You're not done with me yet.
Nope. Mel.
Health Department Director update.
Let me get to my first page here. So, things touchy. All right, so this update will cover June through August of this year, and in no particular order. So we'll start with WIC. Their current caseload is still trending upwards. They're up to 1,066 active clients compared to 894 at this time last year. During this time period, the one highlight that I will note is they celebrated World Breastfeeding Week. It was the first week of August. We had Corey Powell on the radio to talk about World Breastfeeding Week, and Mona Hargrave teamed up with Peacemakers to create nursing pads that could be distributed, and they're just trying to bring greater awareness to the benefits of breastfeeding. Childcare Licensing, they are working still with childcare centers and homes to implement and learn the new regulations that went into effect on the 1st of July, and then the, our newest home, or excuse me, our newest childcare licensing specialist had her shadow with the district specialist last week and is now clear to start seeing and going out and doing her inspections on her own. So that will increase the tempo with which they are able to finish and conduct inspections throughout Saline County, including McPherson and Ottawa County. Home Health, like I said, we're still looking for staff, and they're still maintaining all those in survival mode, really, on their current census. Clinic attended the back-to-school fair to talk about vaccines with families and encourage those back-to-school vaccines that have been, we've been doing. Coming up, we're going to have kind of a busy fall in some ways. We've had students in the past, ever since I've been here, and we continue to work in that academic vein to try and expose either nursing students or other types of students to public health. So they'll have nursing students from Kansas Wesleyan from mid-September to mid-November, and the nursing students from Salina Tech's programs from mid-September to mid-December, and then likely in the spring have another one from KU School of Nursing. And we're gearing up for the fall flu season, which, if you haven't seen them yet, make sure you save the date, October 2nd, from 11 to 6 at the 4-H Building, we'll be doing our annual walk-in and drive-through flu clinic. So the walk-in part is for kids and adults. The drive-through part is for adults only. So we will be ready. If for some reason there is, you know, severe weather, there's some sort of something, we don't get the flu in time for that date, the backup date is that next Wednesday, which, now I'm drawing a blank, I think is the 9th, is when the backup will be. If there is for some reason some postponement because of something that is outside of our control, then just stay tuned to social media for that updated information. MCH is in production on a public service announcement with Philly Creative about MCH services and safe sleep. Besides their work that they've been doing with the Becoming a Mom program the last several years during COVID, they really expanded and refined their ability to provide that training as a virtual training for families, you know, either for childcare or whatever other issues, and so that has also opened it up to them being able to help provide that training to McPherson County, Rice County right now, while Rice County is getting some of their programs and things back up and running, Republic and Lincoln Counties, and they're also in the development phase of creating virtual trainings for their Incredible Babies program. A couple of notes on that is they have seen a high amount of interaction even with the virtual trainings, which they have some parameters in place, too, so it's not like you just sign in, turn your camera off, and then, you know, you get credit for the training. There is interaction they've got built in. There is other things like that, so they can ensure that there is that participation part of it. And feedback has been pretty positive, especially for some families that may have childcare, because we are not able to provide childcare during the training sessions in person or have other, you know, transportation issues possibly and can't come to the Health Department. They are continuing to increase their efficiency with automatic electronic referrals in conjunction with Salina Family, so it helps to keep those things from falling through the cracks, as well as they attended a postpartum support international conference in DC. Big changeover in Ryan White. Diane Pancake, the long-term Ryan White HIV case manager, retired this, there in the summer, and the new case manager stepped in, and she's really picked it up and doing well, and they've done a lot with the program and kind of making some changes and where their layout and the footprint in the building is and how they interact to make sure that they are providing service to their 31-county area of responsibility. And so a couple pictures here of their updated pantry to help with some of their clients who especially have financial needs in relation to their ongoing care for HIV or to help offset at times when they come to Salina from the very far west and being able to help offset some of that cost there, as well for some of the unhoused clients that they work with. So as far as health ed, this year was the first time we've had a booth at the Tri-Rivers Fair. We also had one at the Salina Farm and Art Market, and then National Night Out, which I'll talk a little bit more about here shortly. She's been working on reinvigorating the opioid task force. Now, in August was, that was when it was scheduled to start the assessment process with Wichita State. However, that meeting conflicted with the campus master plan meeting, so it's been rescheduled for later this month. She's worked with the jail to start a focused learning opportunity for inmates there on health topics, and as well as putting together, and will be starting some presentations through the library's education system that they do, starting later this month. And she's in our current, or in the current leadership Salina cohort. All right, National Night Out. Thankfully, it was not 107 degrees this year like it was last year. It was at least, you know, decent, but we were able to connect in a lot of different ways with the public, just with, you know, being able to provide ice water and cooling towels just to help the time they spend out there be a little bit more comfortable. We used a couple of different community survey opportunities that staff had learned at the Transforming Local Government Conference last year. One of them involved our windswept flowers that you can see in that top-left picture as a way to gather some information from the community by picking from the buckets and making your own bouquet of the things that were, of these community things that were important, and then we were collecting, you know, kind of that information. We also did a little, I didn't have a picture of it, but we did a little bit of retro fun with it, too, that when families would put together their bouquet, we went out and got an old-style Polaroid camera and took pictures of them with their bouquet, and I really think that a lot of the families appreciated that, and they thought it was, you know, a great part of kind of capturing that moment. And then we weren't stuck trying to figure out how do we digitally send these pictures to them, and it was kind of fun for some who had never had to sit there and flop an old Polaroid to make it develop, so that was an interesting little tidbit of just connection there. So the top three things that kind of came out of the flower picking were education, building a diverse and skilled workforce, and improvement and innovation as the topics. And then we had three big kind of ride-in topics of overdose awareness, resources, and mental health. We did another one, too, with rubber ducks, just a quick little, hey, do you use the Health Department? And they had different colors, and they put them in the pool. I mean, we were trying to make these things a little bit more interactive than just standing there with a clipboard and asking questions, and so we had about two-thirds that said yes, they use the Health Department, and about a third that didn't. Something that we started this summer as well is trying to be a little bit more nimble in determining what we can do in terms of like storm response as a facility and as staff. So we had initially had conversations with emergency management and Red Cross about sheltering, and at the end of that conversation, it was more appropriate for our facility to be a sort of a, either a cooling or a warming or type of respite shelter, and we certainly are not equipped to do any type of overnight sheltering or anything within the facility. So during that storm, we opened it up, had a cooling shelter, we had charging stations there for anybody that needed to charge their medical equipment or cell phones or anything like that, a place to be able to cool off, especially with so many that were out of power and heat at that time, or, you know, with the heat at that point. And then we had been focused on in the past, especially in the wintertime, about making sure that you have backup power options for your electrical-dependent medical equipment, especially for your batteries and chargers, and so we were pushing that information out, but it also kind of created then a question that we don't have an answer for yet, but what about medical devices that are hardwired, basically have to be plugged in, and then, you know, how are, you know, how can we help potentially with those types of medical devices in the short term without, you know, giving everybody a generator, because that's not really cost-effective for what we can be able to do, but at least from a planning perspective, how can we help people maybe... But at least from a planning perspective, how can we help people maybe better think through that? Mosquito surveillance will be ongoing through the rest of this month. In the picture there, you can see those are the mosquito traps that we use here. The last couple of years, we've used a contractor who would put the traps out, collect them, take them down, collect the mosquitoes and then send them to the lab for typing of the different types of mosquitoes because different mosquitoes carry different diseases and looking for any indication of West Nile virus. That contractor moved on, so we took it on this year. Those are our traps. So once a week, one of us goes out and there's five different locations spread out across the county. We put the traps out, the next morning we go and we pick all the traps up, sort those insects, package them up, we send them to the lab at KDHE. And then they use that along with information from other parts of the state to determine risk for West Nile virus and to look for any other type of mosquito borne viruses. Protection measures, I mean, we talked about it before, but you know, it's just good to mention it again, long sleeves if you're going to be outside, mosquito repellent with DEET, fixing your screens because they like those little holes that they can get in. And then, you know, to the one big thing we do often is every Wednesday still a dump day, just a reminder to dump outstanding water. And if you can't dump out that standing water, using mosquito dunks. And we have mosquito dunks at the health department. You can come pick up one, two, three or four of them. But basically what they do is they break up the or they interfere with the growth cycle so that mosquitoes can't breed on that standing water. So if you have areas of your yard or your field that tend to fill with a lot of water and have your impromptu ponds, of course, you can't drain, but you can throw a couple of those in there or your ditch and that will help keep the mosquito breeding down. If you want more information about vector borne diseases or West Nile virus, I've had the the links here are available. They're also in the written report as well. So coming up, we've revamped our onboarding process to make it a three step process where after they're through with HR in Maryland, they come over, they spend a couple of days in administration where we take care of everything over there that is relevant to every single employee. ID cards, all the mandatory training that every employee has to do, getting them set up with headshots, all of that. Once they finish that, then they go to their their individual divisions for their job specific training onboarding. And it's actually helped supervisors and it has helped the new staff that are onboarding because with that division of steps of how they onboard into the organization, it's not the first day they've already, you know, been inundated by HR with lots of information and then start getting inundated with all of our information, plus trying to learn their job. And it has actually been a much better process from the feedback I've been getting from supervisors and from staff. We are in the pre-production and next week we'll start recording for a podcast series that's called Let's Talk About It. The first set of episodes are going to be based on really us talking about what public health is and the different programs and how that fits into the community. And then we will expand those episodes eventually to different public health topics of concern in the community and so be looking for that. And then, of course, we attended the government government campus master plan sessions just a couple of weeks ago. Budget wise, looking at our expense and revenue from '23 and '24 at the same time each year. Last year, we were still at a little bit of a head as far as our revenue over expense. And this year, we're the same. Right now, my my initial estimate is that a lot of that difference is just from grant revenue and our other revenue, and we also not had as much salary expense on some things because of gaps. But that still doesn't mean that we don't keep a close eye on our revenue and expense. And the other thing we've been working on this year too is really trying to kind of transform, I guess, in some ways, our our budget and our budget lines so that we have a better in and out related to some of our grants and you can be able to look at a revenue side and a budget side or expense side and kind of see where it's coming in and how it's going out and some, which we've been able to do before, but sometimes it's been a little bit more of, you know, having to dig down into the the full detail. And we're trying to get it to where it makes it much clearer to for even, you know, our for everyone to be able to understand so and that we have really good, timely, I guess, you know, improved as far as being able to see those funds flowing through. And so with that, any questions?
Jason, are you doing the podcast yourself then?
So I am doing the first episode as an introduction. And then we have staff who are the best ones to tell those stories for each of the divisions that would be doing theirs. And then as we go on to the next set of series, it'll be staff, it will be really whoever's the best person on that particular topic to be able to talk about it and tell that story. Because nobody really wants to listen to me talk all the time. I certainly don't, so.
Any more questions for Jason? Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thanks, Jason.
Announcements?
Couple announcements. Wednesday of last week, I attended the North Central Kansas Commissioners Meeting in Concordia. And the next day, Thursday, along with Jason Teller, I toured the Salina Family Physicians' Facility. I was quite amazed at the the scope and the size of that operation. It was a very enlightening tour that I took.
Executive session.
Staff would request that the commission recess to executive session under the non-elected personnel exception to the Kansas Open Meetings Act for 10 minutes to discuss the county administrator's contract and reconvene in this room at 9:42.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second to convene in executive session. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
That passes by zero. We are in executive session.